Okay, everyone, we will call the special meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order. Thank you for your patience as we took care of some media requests. Just before we have our roll call and our pledge, I'd just like to announce that an email was received today from applicant Scott Kelly this morning withdrawing his application from consideration. So we have 11 applicants to consider on tonight, colleagues, and then also for the members of the public. That being said, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam President. John Mayer.
Here.
Howard Rosenberg.
Here.
Lisa Ruggerio.
Here.
Nick Smith.
Here.
Angela Taylor.
I'm here.
Student Representative Kyle Hood is absent. I'm Veronica Frankel. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we will have our pledge of allegiance. We have a very, very, we have a very, very full audience, and I thank you for that. So we're going to just ask our Chief of Staff to lead us in the pledge on tonight.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now or after public? After that. Okay. Okay, we want, we're going to begin with public comment, and I have several public comment cards, and we appreciate that. We would like to begin with, with the applicants that are here. So applicants, if you are here and would like to take this opportunity to have public comment, then please fill out a yellow public comment card. We're looking forward to hearing from you, certainly your option, but we'd like to give you that opportunity first. In addition, there were three applicants that could not be here on tonight, and they have sent written statements, and we have asked our executive assistant to read those after we received a public comment from those applicants that are here. So again, if you are an applicant, if you're anyone, and you have not submitted a public comment card, and you certainly would like to make public comment, please do so. You can do it at any point, but if you're an applicant, we would really encourage you to do that at this time, and we want to make sure that we hear from all of those applicants on the front end. And I'll take them in the order that we have received them. So our first public comment from our first applicant is Helm Lehman. Helm, are you here? Thank you very much for being here, sir. You have three minutes, and we'll get that microphone on for you because we want to make sure we hear from you. Thank you, JJ. No, JJ will make sure it is, though. Thank you for being here, and we really appreciate your application, sir.
You bet. Thank you. Good evening to the board and also members of the community. I was asked by the board to respond to two particular requests. One, a little bit about who I am and also the value that I can bring to the board. So a little bit about me. November this past year, my wife and I celebrated our 34th wedding anniversary. We have two children, daughter Erin, who is 30, and a son, Russell, who is 25. Both have gone to school here in Reno, and they both still live in Reno in their own homes. Fortunately, not in our home. I've been involved in community voluntary volunteer activities since 1988, and I've been on a number of, still am, but have been on a number of numerous professional and volunteer boards. And a little bit about my experience, I was able to earn executive-level positions in large healthcare organizations and also with a Fortune 50 corporation. And my approach to my work and my community service is to engage all the stakeholders involved in a particular problem. And by doing that, I like to use a collaborative approach where we get all kinds of input, ideas, and then we work together on determining what is the best possible or the best, most effective ways to move forward in hopes of solving very complex problems. So the value I can bring to this board, there are three primary things, but they don't exclude others as well, but I think these are the three primary things. And that is, one, my lifelong commitment to helping all children be successful. Secondly, to exercise my professional skills and training and in order to manage complex projects and also build positive and productive relationships with the people that I'm working with and stakeholders. And then third is to put to use my formal education, which includes a master's degree in government and an MBA in finance. So I hope that you will select me to continue on into the interview process, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. Our next applicant to address will be Mr. Gary McDonald.
I too would like to thank the board. I too would like to thank the board, the community, and the interest in this position. Like many, I watched some events unfold in the past couple of years that brought back some of my background, and I'll share a little bit with you. I started my professional life as a teacher in upstate New York. My dad was a superintendent, assistant superintendent of schools, and he, upon his death, had a building dedicated to him, which we're very proud of. My mother taught reading until she was 77. My brothers, my brother, my sisters, their husbands, wives, all were educators. I'm the only one that changed fields, and I got into business and professional sales. I've had relationships with some people on this board in various fields. I've been a community servant for a number of years, very proud of that. So as I sat and read about the opening, I thought, this is very interesting. So I had opinions about how everything transpired over a couple of different issues, just like most people, and I watched it unfold in the media in a not-so-pleasant way. And so I said to myself, I said, I can either sit back and continue to witness, or I can step forward and bring the skill sets that I've had over the number of years that I've been in the community in education and leadership and everything else and offer it to the community and to this board. I don't need a job. I have a job. I don't need things to do. I have things to do. I have a six-month-old puppy. I have a career that's really going well right now. What I do have is a concern. I don't, I'm not a stakeholder in the typical ax-grinding capacity. I don't have children in the schools. I don't have grandchildren in the schools. I have an interest in the business development of this community, and that is so closely tied with what's going on with our school system today. EDON, the Chamber, other, other groups are out there pushing to bring businesses, to bring jobs that will benefit us all. That's going to be dependent upon a great school system. So on my application, I put that one of the things that I wanted to be a part of helping to do, because I sell real estate, and when people ask me, what are the best schools to put my children in, I want to be able to look at them honestly and say, it doesn't matter which school your child is assigned to, they're all great. And so with that in mind, I would like to be considered to move forward and ultimately to be named to the seat that is being vacated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and again, thank you for your application. Next, Mr. Bill Horn. Come on up, Bill. You've been to enough of these meetings. You know the routine.
I think I do. President Taylor, members of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. My name's Bill Horn, and I'm an applicant for the Zone G trustee vacancy as well as a candidate for the full term. Five of our seven children graduated from Reno High School, and five of our grandchildren are attending either the TMCC College and TMCC High School at the same time, Academy of Arts Careers and Technology, Spanish Springs High School, Shaw Middle School, Mendive Middle School, and Van Gorder Elementary School. And this fall, a sixth grandchild will be starting kindergarten. And my interest is not limited to just the six grandchildren. I have 17 other grandchildren that are being educated across the United States. After reading for Candy Van Meter's third-grade class up at Incline Village Elementary School for 13 years, I turned my attention to the school board the summer of 2014, as you all started to have struggles and people in the community weren't very happy. I've also been an active unofficial, and I emphasize unofficial, participant of the Public Schools Overcrowding Repairs and Needs Committee. My understanding of the ballot question and the serious need, and I emphasize not want, for $781 million to address the overcrowding challenges, will allow me to work with each of you collaboratively and the voters, and I emphasize the parent voters, because the parent voter is somebody who has a child in the schools right now, to enlighten them on the $781 million need, that it will be utilized appropriately and that it has been precisely identified by the professional staff as to what needs to be done. There's no question in my mind, these funds are needed. And I can tell you that the plans are laid out in detail by the professional staff that Superintendent Tracy Davis leads. By appointing, I will bring 36 years of broad leadership and business ownership, 13 years of public experience working with a variety of elected officials where we met our budgets each and every year, and when we built the capital project, we built it on time and on budget, and 50 years of volunteer educational experience. In 1991, when I came to Reno in 1991, I partnered with Reno High School and my company, Sarah Office Concepts, built a career center and education center. We worked with the at-risk students. We got an alliance of dentists to provide free dental and cleanings for these at-risk children, started a golf tournament for fundraising, as well as awarded scholarships. Trustee Taylor, trustee mayor, trustee Rosenberg Ruggerio, Franklin Smith, you personally know that I have the time to work with you and trust, and Superintendent Davis in educating the children of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. And again, we thank you for your application. Katie Simon-Holland, our next applicant. Thank you, and of course, you know you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, trustees, Superintendent Davis, staff, and fellow citizens. For the record, my name is Katie Simon-Holland. I want to start by thanking you for your service to the students and families of Washoe County. Public service is truly difficult and noble work, and I applaud you. And I also want to thank you for this opportunity to share a few comments on my qualifications and intentions regarding the District G trustee appointment. First, my background. As you may note from my packet, I believe I bring some demonstrated results in several areas that may be of particular importance to the district at this time. Financial management. I was the CEO for Washoe County for 15 years, responsible for a budget of $800 million, serving the same population that you serve. And during the recession, despite losing 40% of our budgeted revenues, we received a bond rating upgrade and a 90-plus percent voter approval rating of our handling of the fiscal crisis, as well as a 44% increase in citizen satisfaction. We won the Cashman Good Government Award from the Nevada Taxpayers Association three times. We were named the number-one digital county in the United States for our population size, and we were invited to Washington, D.C. to present on our cost-effectiveness strategies. Second, successful bond question experience. The Washoe County team won three bond elections during my time, and I initiated a successful statewide advisory ballot question to prevent the diversion of funding from the local governments to the state, for which I was named to the Nevada Association Counties Hall of Fame. Community involvement and public confidence. I've been a board member, vice chair, or chair of 17 different boards, including EDON, the United Way, and WIN, and I taught effective board governance through the United Way. I was the recipient of the Making a Genuine Difference Award biannually from Trucking Meadows Tomorrow that's given to an individual that has made a significant impact on the region's quality of life, and I was honored to carry the Olympic torch in recognition of my community service. Open meeting law. I've staffed more than 400 public meetings and experienced with successful compliance with the open meeting law. And education. I hold a master's degree in counseling from the UNR College of Education and did my practicum with children and families in the juvenile justice system. I've also taught at TMCC and UNR, as well as in numerous Fortune 500 companies. I've been a small business owner, had to make a payroll, and I've also consulted with communities throughout North America, helping them to be more innovative and better prepared for the future. I decided to become a candidate for this appointment because I feel that the district is at a critical juncture in strengthening the public trust in order to be successful in the much-needed ballot question, and I believe I can be helpful because of my experience, skills, and strong relationships in the community. I've given my life and career to public service, and there is nothing in my mind that's more important in our community right now than ensuring that our educational system is the very strongest it can be. And if I can help, it would be an honor to serve with you. Thank you for your time and your dedication to our children and our future, and thank you to my federal candidates as well for stepping up to serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Holland. David Peterson. Mr. David Peterson, thank you, sir, for being here and for your application. Invite you to the podium, and of course, you know by now you have three minutes.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Yeah, so my name is David Peterson. I am a resident of Reno and have been here since I finished my medical training in pediatrics about 10 years ago. I really care about the well-being of children, and as my career and the training that I've undertaken to this point has shown, children, I think, are the most important thing for our future. At Renowned Children's Hospital, currently I serve as the chief of pediatrics, as well as the director of the pediatric hospitalist program. And as a hospitalist, I help take care of all children who are hospitalized for any needs that can't be taken care of in the community. I truly care about children's needs, not only their medical needs, but their educational needs. And I believe that all children are entitled to a top-notch education regardless of their background. And as the district grows and has challenges, I think the experiences I have as a parent of children in this district, as a pediatrician and as a leader in the things that I have done in the past, can be an asset to the district and to the members in it. One of my biggest strengths is that I'm able to bring people together with different opinions for the common good. I have the ability to take someone who has high emotions or has a lot of concerns, such as a parent who has a hospitalized child does, and bring them together, work together towards a common goal. And I think that's something that I could contribute very well to on this, on this board. I think that the district has some challenges and opportunities ahead of them, and I think by openly addressing and discussing those opportunities is the best way to move forward. My children currently attend both elementary, middle, and high school here in the Washoe County School District, and I've been very impressed with the level of dedication of the staff and the teachers, as well as the different academic and artistic and opportunities that they've been afforded there. The other thing is the theme of the Washoe County School District, "Every Child by Name and Face Until Graduation," really kind of hits home with me. It takes something that I think is the most important thing that we do with children is they're all individuals, and we need to deal with them at an individual level. And the increase in graduation rates over the last years really is a tribute to the district and to what you guys have done to help improve things. So I hope the board would consider my application and my unique perspective as a parent and as a pediatrician to help better the school and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson. Heather Parkin. Ms. Heather Parker, thank you so much for your application and for being here.
Thank you.
The podium is yours for the next three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Heather Parkin, and I'm a teacher with the Washoe County School District. I'm seeking to fill the Board G trustee position simply because I am tied to the Washoe County School District, and I want to see this district excel. Strengthening our community through education is the easiest way to see it thrive. As a product of the Washoe County School District, I can attest to these statements. I grew up in Reno, and the only public schools I've ever attended are Jesse Beck, Swolpe, and Reno High, all schools within District G. I am the youngest of nine children, all of whom who are Reno High School graduates, and I have seven nieces and nephews who are future graduates of the Washoe County School District as well. I've been in education for over 16 years, with over a decade of those in the Washoe County School District. I've also taught abroad and for other districts in the West Coast, including Clark County. Throughout that time, I've taught Spanish, English as a second language, and technology amongst other subjects. I have a bachelor's in secondary education and Spanish and a master's in teaching English as a secondary language, both from UNR. I'm interested in serving on the Board of Trustees because I've dedicated my life to serving the community through education, and serving as a board member would be another extension of that devotion. I want to be a trustee because I can and want to help. A Board of Trustees member should be a voice of the community, speaking for all concerned stakeholders, the students, the parents, educators, business owners, and other community members. As hard as the information may be to hear sometimes, the role of a trustee is to listen to the community and act accordingly. I'm in a perfect position to help because I am in a school setting every day. For many, having someone to voice a concern to in person can go much further to fulfilling the board's vision and mission than an email or a phone call. Just knowing that someone is there to listen and lend a sympathetic ear can work wonders for community relations. As a teacher, I'm in a unique position that makes me ideally suited for the District G trustee position. I know what's happening in our schools and can be a voice for the people that want to see change. Given the current climate between the school board and the community, having a teacher on the board would go a long way to repair the fractured relationship and lack of trust between the parties that currently exists. The WCSD is looking to accomplish some major achievements in the coming years, 90 by 20, continuing to build the 21st century education into the curriculum, and funding to ease overcrowding and school improvements, amongst other things. We will not find effective solutions as a board or a school district without the support of our community. All this must be carried out in a positive manner and contribute to the district fulfilling its mission to serve the students and the community as a whole. That's why, as a teacher, someone who's directly involved in the school community, I'm an excellent choice to fill the district's position. Thank you for your time and consideration. Three minutes on the dot.
Exactly. That's a teacher for you, huh?
That's right.
Thank you again for your application. Mr. Carlos Ldom. Carlos, and I will again thank you for being here, and thank you, sir, for your application. You two are familiar, so you have three minutes, sir.
All right. Dr. Taylor, Vice President, Mayor, Board, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. At the end of 2014, I sat in the same room, applying for a different seat, and side-by-side with you to build a better school future for our children. The candidate pool was stellar, and one rose to the top. You're a stronger body today because of Dr. Angie Taylor.
I'm voting for Carlos, just so. Oh, is it too early for that?
Interviewing with the board was unforgettable and a great, I learned a great deal from the experience. As the selection process came to a close, trustee Ruggerio suggested that we stay involved. Well, I'm staying involved. The process ignited a spark, and since that day, I've been asked a lot of times to stay involved, stay involved, run for a seat, run for assembly, run for something, and they just, they haven't felt right. When the vacancy for District G was announced, I felt compelled to apply again. I wasn't sure why. Something was drawing me back to the board, and everyone that I spoke with confided what thought I was nuts. I was beginning to question my own decision after all that input until this last Sunday. As I listened to my pastor, Dan Frank, he talked about spiritual gifts. These gifts are called by many other names, your skill set, your intuition, your innate abilities, but they all mean the same thing, the tools you possess within you to make the world around you better. And they're oftentimes difficult to prioritize, times difficult to identify. But he asked a question, what wrecks you, as a way to identify, what wrecks Carlos? And I could quickly identify what wrecked me. It was, it was, it came to me very quickly. We live in a wonderful community, surrounded by wonderful people. Our state continues to attract business. We have local talent-building startups. Our continuity is becoming very strong. This is Reno. Look at the beautiful community we live in. But we're failing in one area, the education of our children. We rank consistently last among in education polls dollars spent for student graduation rates. Name the indicator, and we're failing. If we top a list, it's typically the ones you don't want to have the blue ribbon. We tell each other at cocktail parties and PTO meetings, well, if you remove the data from Clark County, we'll look pretty good up here. But it's just a lie we tell ourselves. Unfortunately, a quality education is beginning to feel like a luxury only a few can obtain. Finally, this November, you're asking the citizens of Washoe County to invest $781 million for capital improvements with no sunset clause. A trustee with a construction background, a strong history of success in that field, would be a balanced addition to this team and an opportunity to tell, no, show the community, we are listening, and we will manage your investment appropriately. Tonight, I'm here again asking to serve with you. You have a choice, look backwards or move forward. I sit here, and I promise you this, we will disagree. We will debate passionately. We will have conflict. Howard may even scold me. But when I argue, I argue to make things better, not to win the argument, and the diversity of ideas is just as important as the diversity of color in anything else. Thank you again for allowing me to address this board, and I look forward to having an opportunity to interview.
Thank you, Mr. Ldom. We laughed during your time, so I had to give you extra seconds to make up for that. Then our final applicant that we have a public comment card from is Mr. John, is it Milan, Malone?
Mylan.
Mylan. Sorry about that, sir. Thank you so much for your application, and thank you for being here. Again, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much for allowing me to address you and for considering me. I'm going to ask for your support. I've been in education for a long, long time, since 1962 was my first teaching job. I've taught in Africa, in China, Alaska, Hawaii, so I'm familiar with the way systems are built and the way systems work, rather than simply a Washoe County focus. Under the duties of the board, number six is listed as monitor the educational and operational performance of the district. That's the area where I would actually like to focus. I've been in Reno since 1992. I've sent two children through the public schools here, and I've had very brief, and cannot encounters, but very brief contact with most superintendents, starting with, some of you may remember Mary Nebgen, through Heath Morrison, and then we went back to Hawaii for five years, and now we're back home again. And if we're going to monitor the educational and operational performance of the district, one of the things we need to do is make sure there's transparency and accountability. And accountability is a very tricky thing. We often want other people to be accountable without ourselves being accountable. And I hope this doesn't hit too close to anyone, but an example is the theme or slogan of the district, which is, you folks know it better than me, "Every child by face and name until graduation." That's a wonderful phrase. It's really a great phrase. What does it mean? And how are the people going to be held accountable for that? How are the people in the field going to be held accountable? Will there be some consequences for not knowing the name and face of every child in your school? Who has to know? The principal? All the teachers? The PE teacher who has maybe 400 kids? And when do they have to know by? So I think one of the things I would like to see the district get away from is the idea of sloganeering or statements that really look good. But when you talk about accountability, where does it come in? How is it forced, how are people forced to encounter accountability? Another example, and again, I hope I'm not stepping on your toes, a couple of meetings ago, the folks came from the International Baccalaureate at Worcester High School, and they have a fantastic webpage. I've known a number of parents whose children were in that group, and they liked it very much. But if you look at their goal, their goal is...
Mr. Mylan, why are you passing? I'm going to tell you, you're over time.
Oh, I'm over time?
Yes, you have, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Excuse me. Anyway, we can do that later on. Thank you very much for listening to me, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you for your application, and thank you for speaking on tonight. Again, before we open it up for general public comment, there were, again, three applicants that could not be here tonight, but they sent comments, and I've asked our recording secretary, JJ, if she would read those for us, so we can at least hear from them in the way that we can, so, thank you.
The first one I have is from Kent Bailey. To the trustees of the board, good evening. While I certainly would have liked to join you in person, business travels prevent me from being here this evening. Your time and consideration in filling the board vacancy is appreciated, and I look forward to meeting each of you in person very soon. My name is Kent Bailey, and I have lived in Reno since the spring of 2014, 2004, sorry, relocating for work from Fayetteville, Arkansas. It was great getting back to the West, as I have lived... It was great getting back to the West, as I have lived most of my life in Wyoming, Colorado, and Montana. I am married to my husband, Steve, and together we celebrate the adoption of our son, Oliver, next Friday, the 18th. Oliver is young and a few years from school age, but we look forward to him attending Jesse Beck Elementary, Swope, and Reno High School. As my application states, I see this as a dynamic time for public education in Washoe County. Growing facility needs, maintenance of existing infrastructure, and stressed financing are facing every citizen of the county. Our board has seen its reputation tarnished over the past couple of years, and working hard together, we can rise to the challenges that lie ahead. I had the honor and privilege to be elected to a local school board in Wyoming. The voters put their trust in my leadership and professionalism to represent their interests in terms of educating the community youth, one of the greatest responsibilities a public servant can take. Again, I appreciate your time this evening and would appreciate full consideration to fill this vacancy. Respectfully, Kent Bailey. The next letter I have is from Greg Evangelatos. Dear Mr. Lasik, the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees will be hearing from each of the potential candidates at the special school board meeting of March 9th, 2016. I regret to say that I will be tied up in a professional engagement in another Nevada county and cannot attend this meeting, but it is important for the Board of Trustees, the school district staff, and for the public to understand my motivation and background in seeking this position. My name is Greg Evangelatos, and I am the son of a Greek immigrant who became a naturalized citizen of these United States. I have resided in northern Nevada for over 39 years. My wife of 37 years, Janine Van Voort, a Washoe County school teacher for nearly 25 years, passed away recently from cancer. My son, Gregory Michael Evangelatos, is a product of the Washoe County School District, is married with two sons, and will be graduating from UNR Medical School this spring. I have been both a public servant with several Nevada municipalities, including 17 years with the city of Sparks, Nevada, as well as a professional consultant and business owner. Currently, I am a planning and development consultant. I have often told people that the worst day in school is better than the best day working. Learning is a wonderful experience. The Washoe County school system is at a critical crossroads. The passage of the school bond issue at the November election is the most important task of this decade. Why? With the increase in student population due to growth and new births, the preservation and expansion of the public education system is the most critical aspect of preserving and enhancing the quality of life for this region. I am seeking this appointment because I believe this effort requires the full attention of the person appointed. I would further indicate that because of this, I would not seek election to the office in November, but would rather allow other people to pursue this. This would allow for a full-time effort to be geared toward helping the district do its work and eliminate the distraction of a political campaign for others. I strongly believe that I can bring my experience in both the public and private sector to build the necessary bridges in the community to get this bond passed. I have no doubt that in this pool of candidates, you will find an excellent choice since in viewing the list of candidates. Respectfully submitted, Greg Evangelatos. Finally, I have a letter from Diane Nicolet. Dear Washoe County School District Board of Trustees and community, I am submitting this letter in my absence to explain why I am not in attendance at the March 9th special session meeting to review District G applications. Previous obligations have me on the East Coast attending a National Coalition for Campus Children's Centers board meeting and presenting at the annual education conference. My presentation to colleagues from around the United States will address the following topic: Boards That Work: Strategies For Success. I hope you are smiling and can see the beauty in this situation. Thank you for your consideration of my application. Warm regards, Diane Nicolet.
Thank you, JJ. As we are still in the public comment period, again, I have a stack here of those that would like to make public comment. If you have not filled out a card, but you would like to have an opportunity to make public comment on today's agenda, then please fill out one of these cards and just give it to one of the members of our staff, and we will be happy to hear from you. And I will take these cards in the order that we have received them. So we will begin with Pam Solasi. Did I say that right, Solasi?
You did. I'm Solasi.
Solasi. Thank you very much for being here. You know, you have three minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. My name is Pam Solasi, and I would like to speak about candidate Heather Parkin. I've had the opportunity to know Heather for many years, and I am very impressed by her experience. As she noted, that of course she does have a background in teaching Spanish, traveling abroad, teaching Spanish as well, English as a second language, and technology, all things that are very important, I think, to our school district. As a parent of two children, and also I have five nieces and nephews in the community, having a teacher as an advocate is very important to me. Heather has the opportunity every day at school to speak and learn more about what students want, what educators want, what administrators want, and what parents want. And that's what's important to me. I want my voice to be heard as well through the school board. Also, you know, what is important is the education that my children are getting, and I'm very invested in this community, as I've already paid for both of my children to have the Nevada prepaid tuition program through UNR. I want to see people on this board that are going to stick not just in a professional capacity as a teacher or in another role, and I do appreciate all of the experience that all the applicants have, but somebody who's going to continue to implement these ideas within the school over coming years as well. And I think Heather also brings just a unique aspect to her job as a teacher. She's been recognized by Governor Sandoval, as well as there's been articles written about Heather in the Nevada Review General. She is doing what we ultimately need to do with children. We are trying to produce children that are educated, that can hold jobs, and that can serve our communities. So Heather being a part of the JAG committee that helped...what is it? The Jobs for America's Graduates, that's what we're trying to accomplish, and we're trying to get every day these students further along in that process. So we need somebody who also looks at that, what a student needs each and every day and down the road, because these children are our future, as to, quote, Whitney Houston, I think it is. So I just think it's very important to have a school board that has a teacher in the trenches each and every day representing us and having that voice, listening to parents, administrators, other teachers, and students, and bringing that information to the rest of the board to make informed decisions. So I would ask that you consider strongly Heather Parkin as a member of your board. Thank you for your time. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Solasi, for being here.
Thank you.
Caitlin Howard. Caitlin Howard, we have you here to speak. Thank you so much. Ms. Howard, you have three minutes, as you know.
So my name is Caitlin Howard. I'm currently a teacher at Vaughn Middle School. I work with Heather Parkin every day, and I'm here to speak on her behalf. I feel that as a teacher, that we...even though we don't have a...I personally don't have a direct relationship with you as the school board, I feel like the decisions that you guys make do affect me, and I feel supported by you in many instances, and I feel like even though I don't get to interact with you as a team, we are a team. And so I feel that having a teacher that is someone who can be a voice for us as teachers is...makes me feel like I'm being supported a little bit more, even though I already do feel supported. I think also having a teacher as a board member can help with...someone who's on the front lines can maybe see a problem before it's become a problem, can see something that's starting to...maybe hear some comments from parents or see what's going on in the school, and be able to address those issues before they really become an issue. Attributes that Heather has that I feel like are important is, ever since she came into Vaughn, she has made me feel like my opinion matters. She will ask my opinion about things to kind of...to see how her opinion compares to other people's, and I feel like my opinion is valued when she asks for it. And she's constantly asking how she can support me. If she sees someone's having a bad day, she tries to support them and goes above and beyond what is expected of her at work to try to support our community at our school and also the students. And she definitely tries to get to know them by name, all of them, even the ones that she doesn't have in her class. So, yeah, I think that having a teacher would be a great thing to have on the board. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Looks like I have Christine Parkin. I bet we know who you're going to speak on behalf of.
I can guess you know I'm a family member.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me speak. I just wanted to attest, as a family member, to Heather's commitment to the educational process. She really loves her job and has always a great rapport with the students. She's recognized problems in the household where she's brought breakfast to school every day so that the kids are not hungry starting out for the day. She's brought used clothes to make them feel comfortable fitting in with their fellow students. She's even gone to bat for the courts with a student who had a misunderstanding with the school police and was at risk of losing his full-time scholarship to college when he graduated, and she successfully was able to get the judge to rescind the infraction. She even got an award from Governor Sandoval for that Jobs for America program and an accommodation from him. And I think it's just to recognize that she really concerned about students and their I know that having a current teacher on the school board would be a great asset, because I think, as other people have said before, she would have her finger on the pulse of what's going on, both with the students and their parents, and I think also the teachers and the community. And I think with this current bond issue coming up and some of the concerns that the public has about it, she would be able to garner some teacher support and also be able to relate back what's going on within the school community and the parents and that sort of thing. I think she'd be great on the board because she is a teacher, and she has a great vitality interest, and she's not afraid to express her opinion, and so I know that she would always be there rooting for what's best for the community and the students. And I urge you to support her candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Keith Parkin.
We have this order, alphabetical order.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Keith Parkin, and up front, Heather is my daughter, one of nine, and I have 15 grandchildren. All of my kids went to school in the school district, and on to UNR, eight of them graduated from there. Yes, I'm here to talk about Heather, but that's almost secondary with me. I don't have repaired remarks, as I might have when I was working, and there's a reason. This one comes strong. You're looking at a guy that's the only guy from the group of guys I grew up with that did go to prison, or at least to jail, or be dead, more than one of them, from narcotics before they were 21. Do I care about that? A lot. Did I get to go through college and up to the ranks of industry? Yeah. And I suspect, and I'll never know, one particular person at high school, principal, gave me a break. So I'm here to speak for the kids who get themselves in trouble, and maybe somebody can help them. She's helped kids. I think that idea is not adequately represented on boards like this. If you can save a kid, it's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alice Dezina? Did I say that right?
Is that me?
Oh, I guess I didn't say it right. I'm sorry. Please help me. I'm sorry.
Ledesma. Is that close?
Ledesma. Yeah, that's it.
Well, I don't want to take somebody else's...
You're right.
I'm right, okay.
Alice Dez...Ledesma.
Close enough.
Thank you very much. You have to...thank you, Alice.
Okay. Alice, the only time I've been right all day, so that's good. Thank you. I'm here to speak on behalf of Diane Nicolet, and I am Alice Ledesma. I have been a member of this community for all of my life. I won't tell you how long that's been, but you probably figure it out. I went to schools here, and my kids have been to schools here, and schools here are important to me. And that's why I'm here to support Diane, because schools are important to her. I've known her for over 20 years. I know her professionally and personally. And what I want to talk about this time around is tenacity. Diane is very committed to the work that she feels is important, and this is very important to her. She has put in a lot of effort to being on this board. A number of times, I've been up here speaking about her tenacity. And the depth of Diane's passion and commitment to this position comes in all forms. And she has been on boards with me. She has self-educated herself about running boards and finding out what's at the heart of the matter and how to make things go more smoothly for the people that she serves. She's convinced that education needs for our community's children are the starting point for many solutions for our community to be a better one. She sees collaboration for the district and virtually all other organizations as a way for us to be strong and viable. And she talks about that in pretty much every setting, professionally and socially. Sometimes it's annoying, but she does that all the time. As a member of an agency that deals with children who need and use multiple services to try to equalize difficult situations in their lives, I've worked for social services for 28, 29 years. I'm the division director there now, but started as a case manager. I know how important the programs the school district provides are. I also know how complicated allocating resources are to each important program and making decisions with competing interests can be, and Diane is very good at teasing that out. And so that's why I'm here, again, supporting her, and I hope that you will, too. Shout out to my former boss and the rest of the people that are in the pool. I'm very proud that there are so many people that are interested in this position. So good luck to you, and thank you.
Thank you for being here. Ledesma.
Ledesma. That's my Alice.
Give me another shot. Alice, thank you so much for being here. Pat Slaven? Thank you for being here. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Pat Slaven. I retired from Truckee Meadows Community College, and I am here to speak on behalf of Diane Nicolet. I first met Diane when TMCC got its EL Core Childcare Center, which Diane is the director for. And what a wonderful day that was. It was a very exciting moment in the history of the college. But it's not just an ordinary childcare center. It's got a partnership with our Early Childhood Development Program. So the students are able to experience activities and participate in those activities in the childcare center. This took quite a bit of coordination, and...which brings me to my admiration for Diane in being able to bring together faculty and staff, and in particular, students, to make sure that the program was effective and successful. And our students have benefited from that, so we're grateful for that. I think Diane has education at the very core of her being. Not only was she working full-time at the college, but she went back to school to get her doctorate degree, and I think there are people in... And I think there are people in this room who have gone through that same rigorous and grueling experience. So I think it's a strong statement of her commitment to education. She does sit on a couple of boards, locally and statewide, and also a couple nationally as she mentioned, that's where she is today. One of the boards that was interesting to me was the National Accreditation Commission Policy Council, which reviews standards and best practices nationally. And I think it's a real gift for her to be able to share those with us locally. Diane's administrative experience is very strong. Of course, in her position, she has to deal with personnel management, facilities planning, and of course, that thing that we all dread talking about, budget issues. And the thing that I think is great is that she got those experiences in an educational environment, which I think adds a nice little extra layer for this particular position. She's hardworking, she will ask the tough questions, and she has this wonderful ability to be able to bring people together for a common goal. So I would ask you please to consider her for a candidate for your vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slaven. Anna Severins? Thank you so much, you have three minutes, thank you.
Thank you. And my name is Anna Severins and I'm also here to speak on behalf of Diane Nicolet. I'm a resident of Sparks, Nevada and past AmeriCorps member with the Washoe County School District and the Classroom on Wheels program, otherwise known as the Cow Bus. And I'm proud to know that some of those cows, though they're getting old, are still running. And as you've already heard, unfortunately Diane was unable to be here tonight due to a professional commitment. I've known her as a friend and a colleague, both personally and professionally for many years, and was delighted to learn that she has submitted her application for this position as many, as you all are probably well aware. And given the increasing national and state recognition of the importance of early learning and high-quality pre-K opportunities for all of our children as a critical component to closing the achievement gap, I believe Diane's credentials, skills, and applications are incredibly timely for this board to consider having such essential representation. I thank you for your time and good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Severins. Leanne Shelton? Ms. Shelton, thank you for being here, you have three minutes.
I'm also here to speak for Diane Nicolet. I have known Diane for 18 years and I bring a different perspective than other folks in the audience here. Diane's actually somebody who helped me become successful. I am one of six children, the only one who graduated high school, the only one who went to college. And I became an educator because Diane Nicolet saw something in me that other people didn't. I also started board work very early on in my career and was very unsuccessful. It was awful. And I was so far in over my head and Diane took me to the side and said, you can do this, just give me a minute. So she worked with me for a while and now I'm the vice president of the Reno AEYC Board. So I also direct a school, I direct the Goddard School in South Reno. So I come at you guys as a product of what Diane's tenacity can bring. As you guys have heard, she sees this as a very important role, serving our schools, our students, our employees, and our community. And she goes for that and she is tenacious. She is a bulldog with a bone. She has seen you guys three times. She ran for District E, second application was to fill the Halsey's vacancy, and now her application to fill this seat. And she's gonna keep knocking on your door, so don't think that she's going away. I think the third time's a charm. Diane understands the work of education, she understands the business of education and the rewards of being in education. She belongs in the educational arena, it fills her soul. And having served on various boards and committees with her since my 18-year-ago start, I know that wherever she is in education, she makes a positive and lasting difference. Education and Diane, they're like, I don't know, like a Reese's Peanut Butter Cup, it just happens, it's good. I strongly urge you guys to accept our application.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Gregory Peake? Thank you for being here, three minutes there.
Good evening, President Taylor, Superintendent Davis, trustees. My name's Greg Peake and I'm speaking to you as a third-generation builder-developer in Northern Nevada with two young boys about ready to start the school district. We have many great candidates and that's the great news. Your job's going to be tough, but this is a very good problem to have. I'd like to address two quick issues. The first, there's some questions to whether you should appoint merely a placeholder or somebody on a permanent basis, or who wants to continue on. I really urge you to appoint somebody who wants to continue on for two reasons. Number one, that absolutely ensures their deep and long-lasting commitment to the position, but also as a voter, it allows me to give a thumbs up or down in the next election as to the job performance. I think that's important. Number two, again, a lot of great applicants, but I'm standing up here today for Katie Simon-Holland for a couple of different reasons. I've worked with her as a developer in Washoe County and I can't tell you how much I respect the work that she's done and helped build the unincorporated areas. Secondly, as a member of the Organizational Effectiveness Committee, it's a committee, an advisory committee to provide best practices, feedback to the county. It's made up of business people as well as union members and other stakeholders. I was a member from 2006 to 2012. Katie was the manager. Look at the track record. That time period, we were in the depths of a recession. Property taxes, as you heard, were down, not unlike what's going on with your fiscal crisis today. Katie's leadership allowed the county to survive when many did not. Under Katie's leadership, the county maintained fiscal solvency, lived within its means, and continued to deliver the services to all segments in Washoe County, including its most vulnerable citizens. Yes, it was tough, yes, at times unpopular, but that is leadership. And she's been recognized for her abilities and work. She has shelves full of awards. Among the many accolades and awards is a three-time Cashman Good Government Award. That is a very, very prestigious award, three times. I don't normally stand up for people like this in a public setting, but I feel very, very strongly. As a member of the SB 411 Committee, we talk about public trust. Katie has credibility in the community and we're gonna need all hands on deck to get this SB 411 bill passed. She will bring the same knowledge and skills to the Washoe County School District that she did to build Washoe County into a modern, best practices, and respected government entity. She has the depth and breadth of experience the school district needs and more importantly, a successful, proven track record and credibility again in the community. You have a difficult and important decision in front of you, in my humble opinion, Katie standing up again, coming out of retirement, to again stand up for the public interest and the kids of Washoe County and asking for this job speaks volumes about her commitment to our community and the person she is, but it also makes your job easier because simply put, we'd all be very fortunate if you appointed her. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Peake. Mr. President, Dr. Kyle, we have you come on up, you're next for a public comment and you definitely know the routine.
Thank you, I appreciate it. My name is Kyle Dalby, I'm currently serving as President of Truckee Meadows Community College. I serve on the Board of the Education Alliance. I am a resident of District E and also District G. I have one graduate of the Washoe County School District and I have two other kids, one at Reno High School and one at McQueen High School, and yes, that does cause interesting discussion at the dinner table. You have a tough task in front of you today and there are many good people on this list. I thank you for your work on this process. I thank everyone who's here and the three applicants that are not here for the interest. This is a good problem to have. I'm here today to support Diane Nicolet's application for the at-large vacancy on your board. Diane has extensive experience interacting with the public in a variety of venues, her current work at Truckee Meadows Community College and her doctoral work at university. She brings an understanding of leadership, educational processes, data analysis that will benefit the board as it moves forward in the coming years. In addition, Dr. Nicolet brings valuable experience working with nonprofit boards to advocate for children, some of which she is off presenting at today. This service has included the local Discovery Museum, the statewide childcare advocacy committee, and the National Coalition for Campus Childcare Centers. So again, I strongly recommend Diane Nicolet for the District G, the vacant at-large seat. She will be a great addition to this board. Thank you.
Thank you, President Dalby. That's the end of the cards that I've received. Are there any others that would like to make public comment and have not submitted a card? Okay, see, would you like to make public, you can do a card, yeah, just promise I should do a card before you leave. Okay. And then please, if you would, introduce yourself.
My name's Joanne Devine.
Thank you.
I'm a teacher at Incline High School. I have two kids at Incline High School who went through all the Incline schools. I met Bill Horn, I'm here to speak and support of Bill Horn. I met Bill when he was a reader in my son's third grade class. He is now a senior, so that was quite a while ago. I got to know him better because he was the general manager of the Incline Village General Improvement District, which is sometimes like yours, a little thankless. He has a great interest in Incline and that's a representation that, as a resident of Incline, we would like to see represented on this board. We're a different, we're part of the district, but we're a little bit different. I served with him on the Incline Schools Academic Excellence Foundation Board, where he was the chair for many years. I served on it as a parent representative. So I would like to support him because we would like to have someone who truly understands our community up there. We have one feeder school for, into each school and it's a unique type of situation. He understands our community, he understands our population, and we would hope that we can have that kind of representation on the board. He has a great passion for education, I've seen that the entire time that I've known him. And he has a foot in both areas and he's still very well-respected in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here and thank you for grabbing that comment card on your way out. No, she grabbed it, she did, thank you very much. Again, seeing no further public comment, then we'll come back here for the table. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion from the table? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition? The motion carries and let the record show that it is unanimous. And now we will go on to Agenda Item Number 2.01. This is a review and discussion by the Board of the applications submitted by the legally-qualified persons who have applied to fill the vacancy in District G at-large on the Board of Trustees created by the resignation of Trustee Barbara McClory and consideration of possible selection of those candidates to be interviewed by the Boards from among the following applicants: Kent Bailey, Greg Evangelos, William Bill Horn, Scott Kelly, I have withdrawn his name, Carlos Ladon, Helm Lehman, Gary McDonald, John Malone, Diane Nicolet, Heather Parkin, David Peterson, and Katie Simon-Holland. This is for discussion and possible action. Just before we turn this over to, we have a staff that will present for us, before we do, just for the record, I think it's important to note, just from a statutory standpoint, if we can ask legal counsel, just for an opinion, we know that we have an educator, a teacher from our own school system that is an applicant and we'd like to just note from a legal standpoint, certainly for the public as well as for the Board.
Sure, thank you. So the Ethics Commission has ruled repeatedly that if a person is to seek a school, a teacher gets appointed to the school board or gets elected, they would have to resign being a teacher or they'd be in violation of the Code of Ethics because it's a conflict.
Yes, Mr. Rosenberg, Trustee Rosenberg?
I have some experience with this. I ran for a seat on the Board of Regents. I am on staff at the University of Nevada Reno and have been for 50 years. When I was elected, there was no problem with running. The problem we had was with serving. I went before the Board of Ethics and it was a three-day, rather unpleasant thing, but as long as I would disclose any appearance of conflict, they saw no problem with it.
Thank you, Trustee Rosenberg.
The Ethics Commission ruled in 2012 that would be a violation. I think that was after you served.
Yes, it was. Oh dear.
It's important for the record that that is, how would you advise, please? This is Neil Rombardo, he is chief legal counsel for the Washoe County School District and is serving as counsel during the selection process, so thank you.
So if the applicant is selected and moves forward and is selected at the next meeting, then she would have to resign her position as a teacher to serve without being in conflicts of the ethics laws.
Okay, that's something for Ms. Parkin to, certainly to consider, to consider. Thank you, thank you for that. Well, that's really her, she's heard the information, that's for her to consider and to go from there, if that's something she'd like to do. Now, as we bring this back, Trustee Franco, I'll see your light on.
Trustee Rosenberg, do you mind tuning your mic on?
Trustee Franco, please.
Yes, I just have a disclosure that I need to make prior to our discussion. Pursuant to NRS 281A dot 420, Section 1. Madam Chair, members of the Board, I need to make a disclosure related to applicant Katie Simon-Holland. I know Katie Simon-Holland as a past business partner and I do not have a substantial and continuing business relationship with her. Any action I take on this matter today will not create benefit for me or for Katie Simon-Holland than it will any other business, profession, occupation, or group, as this position does not involve my business, profession, occupation, or group. Therefore, the objectivity of a reasonable person would not be affected and my objectivity is not affected in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for that and we'll make sure that the record reflects that disclosure, so thank you, thank you for that. And now we will turn this over to our presenters. Staff, we have a Chief of Staff, David Lasik as well, will you be joining him?
I will, would you like to jump up there?
Please, if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind. Again, before us, we have David Lasik, who's our Chief of Staff, who are going to be joined by Neil Rombardo, who is the Chief Legal Counsel for the Washoe County School District. This is gonna be the explanation of the process for the selection of the five candidates that will be the finalists and it's under the direction of our legal counsel, so they're gonna walk us through the process. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Good evening, President Taylor, members of the Board, Superintendent Davis, David Lasik, Chief of Staff for the record, and with me and Neil Rombardo are legal counsel, chief legal counsel. And so we have, actually, you guys have voted to use a similar process in the past to appoint a trustee, so we have drafted what that would look like based on that action. So we have had all 12 applicants submit their applications, you have had those packets to review, and we will be asking you to look at the, look at the packets, sorry, if you haven't already done so. And you've heard from the applicants, most of them themselves today. So the process, as we recommend, that happens next is discussion from the Board in a public setting about who you would like to see move forward in the, to the final stages of an interview. That would be five applicants moving on to that stage. After your discussion, we would then ask you to vote, and we have ballots for you. You would place an X next to each candidate's name that you would like to move forward and then Neil and myself would then tally those votes. We're not asking you to rank them in any order, one through five, we're asking you to simply place an X next to their name. Those candidates with the most votes would then move forward to the interview process. And then...
Just for clarity, we vote for five, correct?
You are voting for five.
Thank you very much.
So each of you will select five candidates out of the list to move forward, for clarity. After the finalists are identified, we will then confirm an interview date, which we have tentatively scheduled, and then we will talk about interview questions.
Thank you. Mr. Rombardo, anything to add to that?
Nope. I, yeah, I will add something, actually. So it's important to point out that recently, an issue arose in another public entity where the open meeting law was violated because the Board didn't discuss the topic, they didn't make any deliberations, so it's very important that you deliberate about the issue. We don't obviously want to run into that. Also, it's important to point out that you'll have to sign your selection sheet and after you sign it, it will go into the record and all of your votes will be read aloud so that everyone knows.
So the vote is public, you're just merely filling out the sheet, and then we will read aloud what, how each of you voted. Okay?
Thank you, gentlemen. Before we go to board discussion, any questions in the process from my colleagues? I think everyone is clear. Thank you very much. So now we, will this bring it to the table for board discussion? Trustee Franco, you want to get us started?
Actually, I just want to, I just had a quick question. And you may have said this, and I apologize if I missed it. In the event of a tie after we vote, we have a, we will vote again on a different ballot sheet, or how will that be handled?
And I've done this in the past with other public bodies, what you, let's just say, for argument's sake, you get four that move forward, and two people are tied for five, and we're only forwarding five names, then you would say those four move forward, the other folks drop off the ballot, and then the board would be forced to vote between those two.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, trustee Smith?
Neil, just for clarification and kind of along what she's saying, the agenda item isn't written to restrict us to five. So if we had a tie, we could just have six, or in fact, I could choose that I want to put seven through. So I know we're saying five, but the agenda item doesn't say clearly that it could only be five.
Well, the, the agenda item doesn't need to, you have to remember that agenda items and the open meeting law under NRS 241, oh two oh, and oh three oh, they talk about that the agenda item must be clear and complete, but everything that's germane to the agenda item applies. So in this case, clear and complete doesn't require that you lay out every single step. Otherwise, I would write a three-page agenda item for this one item. So what we have to avoid, and the reason why five is the number, is because you can't appear arbitrary and capricious, so you have to set the rules of the game, right? So what you can't do as a governmental entity, and this is a very important aspect that we have to consider, is you can't make up the rules as we go along. So five is the, is the process, and I would strongly advise you against just deciding, well, we decided we want to send 11 through, or seven, or you have to have, because that makes it easier to challenge, so.
That was, would, would it be, just from a legal standpoint, Ms. Parkin has stood, would it be, would it be appropriate to hear from her at this point, just because of the legal advice interpreted? Would that be okay? Please address, would you mind, please?
I just wanted to...
Yeah, please, please address, and then let's make sure the microphone is on. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Ms. Parkin.
In light of the information, I just still want to make it clear and understood that I'm still very much interested in the position and would still like to be considered, so I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Parkin. Takes all the question off, out of the, out of the conversation. Thank you very much. Are there other questions on the process from, from gentlemen at the table? If, if not, it's, we open, open up the floor for discussion on the, on the 11 candidates, just to have some discussion before we, and then that, will, will you pass out those ballots for us as well? We may, people may want to. And just again, for the record, the ballots have the names of the 11 applicants that are here, and then we will each, we will vote for five. Yes, trustee Rosenberg? Scott Kelly, has he been removed from the ballot? He, he was removed from the ballot?
Yeah, he was removed.
He was removed from the ballot, so there, instead of there being 12, there will be 11 names on the ballot. Thank you, JJ. Okay, the floor is open for discussion. Who would like to begin?
Arboggin.
Trustee Smith?
So I, there are several good candidates. But as I read all the information and I looked back at, you know, what's happened in the history, there are a few that really stand out in my mind, of, of people that I think would serve this board well. And I think that the thing that's important is, for me, as I continue through this process, as I look at what Barbara McClory brought to this boardroom, and her experience and what she had to offer, and then I think back to, she was elected in that position with those qualifications. And so I think to me, finding somebody who best fits what that electorate put together and chose for that person is the key thing for me. So for me, there really is a clear person that I'd like to hear more from, at least. Can I say who it is? Am I allowed to do that?
It's totally up to you.
You know, the, the fact is Diane Nicolet and Barbara McClory are not that unsimilar. In fact, they competed in the same race, as I recall, and...
No, they did not.
Or a different one, but the, the race that she competed in last time, she barely lost.
That was District E.
District E.
District E, yes. That, that's when she ran against.
I apologize for my confusion, but, so she barely, she barely lost, so that's okay. But she, 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 she brings to us what we're losing in Barbara McClory. And I think that that's an important thing to consider when we're considering the people in that part of the district. And then, you know, if the voters choose that that's not what they want in November, and they want to choose somebody else that brings a different type of skill set, we leave that available, whether it be that Diane Nicolet decides to run, I don't know, or Katie Simon, or Bill Horn, or whoever may run, we let them, you know, go through the voting process. But right now, I think it's okay and a good idea that we bring somebody to replace the, you know, what Barbara McClory brought. Now, on the other side, I can certainly see where having somebody who has a lot of community support, along, and Diane has community support as well, but a lot of community tenure, let's put it that way, could also be very good to our organization. So as we think about it, I just think it's interesting, you know, the dynamic that we're faced with, right? We can choose somebody to replace what Barbara McClory brought, and there's one candidate I think that stands out the most for that, Diane Nicolet. Or we could bring somebody who has great organizational management skills, and there are really two of those people that stand out in my mind, and that's Katie Simon and Bill Horn with their experience with Incline Village General Improvement District in Washoe County. So it's kind of interesting how we are, you know, where we're at with that. With all the candidates, they're very good. You know, I, I support those people who are in the business candidates as well, but those are really three candidates that I think that really deserve to come forward in my mind, move forward through the process. You know, I, the other candidates, I think I need to hear more conversation about your guys' perspectives after reading everything. For me, it's hard to learn much about a person just from reading about them. Really, I'm the kind of guy who says, great, this is your interview on a piece of paper, but it means not much to me. I want to hear you talk to me and get all the questions answered. So if I had my way, Neil, I would put all 11 through so I can ask them all the interview questions, right? Because I can really get to know them. But I don't. Five is okay, we'll keep it clear and concise. So I really want to hear some more, if you guys have some other candidates outside of those three. I know I need to look at five, but those are the three that kind of stick out to my mind that can serve great purpose to the board where we're at right now.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Other comments? Trustee Franco?
Thank you, President Taylor. Thank you, trustee Smith, for your comments, and I was actually thinking a lot of the same things that you are. I know, one of the things that I think about with respect to this is the, the fact that this is to complete a, a term and is to fill the remaining nine months. So being able to ramp up to speed and get up to speed on education on our district, having just gone through that and actually still being in that process, I can tell you that it is an immense amount of work, not just for me, but for the staff. So one of the things I'm thinking about as I look at this list are the folks who have had a lot of experience with our district, who've had a lot of experience participating in education and working in the school district. So those are some of the things that I, that I'm looking at as I look at this list, just in terms of the timing and wanting to make sure that we get somebody who can get up to speed really quickly and just start, start, you know, day, day one, you know, running ahead, because this is a tough, this is a tough role. So as I look at this list, and for some of the same reasons, I know that actually, and I'm, and I'm actually glad that to have the clarification from Heather Parkin, there is something about familiarity with the needs of the district that I find to be very appealing, and that knowledge and understanding of what is going on and the complexity of what we have going on in our district. And, and I also have been thinking a lot about what Barbara McClory brought to this district, and, and in thinking about filling this role, that knowledge of education and teaching is a very important skill set that I do not have. As, I have, I have knowledge of the district as a parent and as an adult educator, but I think that's one of the things that I look at in terms of what this board needs. So for those two reasons, I've been, those are the two things that I'm thinking about as I look at this list. That also reinforces, and I will echo what trustee Smith said about Diane Nicolet and her knowledge of education and early childhood education, as well as her vast involvement with committees in this district. And she's been a part of this district in many different ways for a very long time. So it's not, I, I think that she also brings that understanding and that, and that experience. So there are others on this list, but I'll let others speak to, to some of those. I just wanted to share some of the things I'm thinking about.
Other comments? Trustee Rosenberg?
First thing that I would need from each member of this group would be a certificate of having their head examined. Because anybody that would do this willingly has to be crazy. Having said that, I've been in education all of my life. I know how important it is. Diane Nicolet definitely has all the qualifications that one would hope for. I am most impressed with Mr. Horn. We might disagree on a number of things, but I have the distinct feeling that I might learn something there, and that makes me very happy. Carlos Ladon, who I will probably scold many times, as I have in the past, cares a great deal, and that means a great deal to me. He's made a life for himself, I am very, very proud of him, and I know that he'd do a very good job. Katie Simon has all kinds of things to offer us, and she is, again, coming out of retirement. Are you sure you want to do something?
I have my secret.
Look what we're faced with. These are good people who really want to do a good job. We're blessed, and that's the other side of the sword, because we are so blessed. I am exceedingly disturbed about Ms. Parkin. One of the things that I think every board needs is someone in the trenches that's actually doing the work. I get them afterwards, but I'm not in the public schools doing it. And for any legislator or anybody else who passes a law like that, to disqualify someone who is really qualified, I think is a shame. Now, question then becomes, we can appoint, but whether or not she can serve, and that's something she's got to think about herself, and it's a rotten, rotten decision to have to make. In any case...
Yeah, and it's her, certainly her, it's her personal decision to make.
This is the hardest choice I think we've ever had to make, and I'm delighted that it is, and I thank all of you for wanting to do it.
Thank you, trustee Rosenberg. Trustee Mayor? Turn your mic on.
Turn the mic on.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that this is probably, you could put the 11 names in a hat and draw them out one, and it'd be just really a, a great, great school board member. I'm kind of thinking a little different. Katie Simons has a lot of background in how things work and how to get things done, but so does Gary McDonald. He was president of Wynn, Western Industrial Nevada, and he has a lot of connections with the real estate and so forth. And we're really, as a board, cannot go out and promote the bond issue, but we sure can say to our friends, you know, this is what's in the plan and so forth like that. I think that would be advantageous, those two. Also, I think Carlos brings a fresh look to serving on the school board. And I think that, like he said, he's a go-getter, and he's got that A personality, and I think he'd be really a good, hard worker for us on this board. So, and I don't know too many of, I know Greg Evangelotus, when he worked at City of Sparks, and he's a planner guy, and he'd be good, they'd all be good. Bill Horn's got to be good, too, because of his background, so I'm having a real hard decision here. It's, it's really hard, because they all are unique, and they're all people willing to put their money where their mouth is. You know, they, they want to run for an election, which is not cheap, for a position that your first year's pay probably pays one-fourth, and by the time you get done with four years, you might recoup what you spent on election. But I think it's, there's so many good ones there, I, I, I'll tell you, it's going to be a hard decision for me.
Thank you, trustee Mayor. Trustee Bajio, are you ready to speak?
Well, gosh, I, you know, I, I want to just repeat what one of the trustees said. I think we're, we are blessed and to have the, the amazing list of applicants to choose from, and I echo what, which all of you said, that each applicant brings tremendous strength from Katie's experience in, leading the, the county in such a tremendous way, to Bill Horn's long, longtime commitment to education and serving the community, and of course Diane Nicolet, to Mr. McDonald, to Carlos, to, to, to all the folks, and to our teacher, who's done such an amazing job and recognized by our governor. So I am honored to, to have the opportunity to be part of this process, and, but I have to tell you, this is not, this is not easy, but it is a responsibility that we have as trustees. When I sit here today, I want to have a little bit of a voice of Dr. McClory, because she adds, adds so much to this board, and we're, we're going to miss her terribly. And she brought such strength when it came to talking about the needs of our children and the understanding of, of all children. And that's something that I am especially looking at in a candidate, is someone who can bring that strength, too. So, so thank you to all, all of the individuals who took the time to, to speak and to all of the individuals who made public comment. This is not going to be an easy decision, and a decision, as a matter of fact, it may be one of the hardest decisions we make today, so.
Thank you to all of my colleagues, and I will simply add, really, just a ditto to what was said around the table, certainly a thank you to all that put your hat in, in the ring. It's, it's not an easy decision to make, certainly. You know, I was in a similar position a little bit over a year ago, and, and it's maybe even a, a more difficult decision today for you to do that. And so I really, really do thank each of you for doing that, for the work that it takes to show interest, to put a packet together, to, to do all of those things and to step out there. That takes a tremendous amount of courage. It really, really does, and I am, I am honored. All the words that we heard, honored and blessed and ecstatic, and all, all those certainly fit. And there's no doubt in my mind that every single one of the applicants that we have will add value, will add value to, to our board, will bring something that we, that we don't have, and I think that's, that's important, is not just that we feel in, feel in the position, but that we make ourselves better. I think it's absolutely important, I mean, we have a unique opportunity that doesn't happen very often. And certainly Barbara McClory served with such great distinction all of her life for education. And so we don't want to be in this position, but since we are here, how do we take advantage of it to make us better? So when I, when I think about it, there's, there's no one on this list that I can say, well, this person will add no value at all. I mean, that would, that would, it would be easy if I could just eliminate some people based upon that, but, but that is, that is not the case, and, and I will say that. I'm appreciative of the words that Carlos said, but man, this is a tough field, and I'm glad I'm not in it. I mean, it's, it is, it is, it is a tough, tough, challenging, just a really high-quality, really impressive group. From, from me, I look from a board standpoint, I look at who will certainly add, who will help us close some of the gaps that we have, because we always have gaps. You always want to make yourself better. Who will help us meet some of those needs that we have to help us, you know, to get better, to help us get stronger, to help us, you know, correct some things, to help us do better at some things where we were weak, to build upon some of our strengths. I think about who will help us from a community standpoint. We know there's a, there's a, there's a level of skepticism, and how do we help to bridge that? I think that's important, that we look for that, for my, this is what I look for. Someone who hasn't, who has shown a commitment to education, who can bring that. No one is going to bring the lifetime of educational experience that Dr. McClory brought, you know, to us, but it's, we'd be remiss if we didn't have that somewhere in our minds, someone who's shown some commitment to education, leadership experience. I mean, we are, as trustee Bajio said, this is a difficult decision, but this is ours to make. This is part of the task of leadership, who will add to us from a leadership experience standpoint. The board experience matters to me as well, I will say it. I've, I, I came to, to this board with, with a lot of varied experience professionally and so on, but serving on the public body board... public body board is different. It's, it's different, it is, it's just they're unique, and Trustee Rosario's smiling there because she's, I've cried on her shoulder a few times, and, and so, I mean, just, it's, it's different, it's, it's different, and that's, that's a, that's a learning curve as, that, that, as Trustee Frankel said, that we all have to, have to be on. Then there's a level of diversity. This is why I hear Barbara McClory's voice a lot, because she was so committed, not just diversity when you're, you know, counting heads or looking at faces, but diversity of thought, people that bring different perspectives, diversity of, of, of experience, equity, that that matters to me, and who will continue our great commitment to equity in this district and the strides that we are so proud that we have made, and who really will have that same commitment to all children. That's a Barbara McClory statement, "all children." So, those are the things that, as I look through this very, very impressive list of 11, those are the things that are floating around in my head the most, you know, how many of those boxes can I check as we move forward? So, very, very difficult. Again, I just can't say enough about those that step forward, and even those of you that came tonight to, to lend support to, to candidates, and those that sent us emails and calls and text messages, I will, we appreciate all of that, because all of those voices matter, and matter to all of us, so. Okay, Trustee Smith?
You know, I think, I think one of the important things, too, is since we have 11 candidates and we're trying to narrow it down to five, is if you're not selected past tonight, some of you are very visible in the school district and are already doing things in the school district, right, or have joined committees, or even teach a classroom, right? And others, maybe less visible, right, or maybe not really any participation, but they want to fill the vacancy, and that's okay, because that's what I did, right? So, that's, I, I support that, but I would ask that you continue, you know, if you, if you took the interest to be in one of the highest levels in the school district, that you find a place, whether it's in a local school in your neighborhood, I don't care if you have kids, grandkids, or no kids, but you find a place where you can contribute in some way past tonight, and give us the expertise that you have and the knowledge that you have, because if they're not selected to go forward this way, it doesn't mean we don't, you don't have things that we want from you, right? And that volunteerism, because we can never get a vol, enough volunteers, Lisa Marie Lightfoot probably be giving me a pat on the back right now, but we need to get lots of volunteers, so please stick with us and, and keep, keep that eye, and you know what? The truth be told, it's an election year, and this seat's open, so if we choose somebody and it's not really somebody that you felt like should have been in their place, you know, consider running. It's filing time right now, we're going to be choosing that person after filing time, right? So, if you don't make it through and you think that you should have, consider running and let the voters decide, because while we have a choice right now, because we have the lead, and what we have to do in these situations is appoint, ultimately, it's the people's seat, right? And the people in that district get to vote for that seat. So, no matter how big our responsibility is about trying to build the board that we want, I don't get the final say in that. You know, somebody's going to decide that in November, who decides that seat. So, just, you know, I just really ask if you, don't go away, don't fade into the night, because, you know, when I watched what happened when Dr. Taylor was appointed, many of those people who were also applying for that open seat faded into the night, right? It was cool to apply, it was cool to talk, it was cool to go through the process and file the application, but past that, where are they now? And Carlos, I know you're back here again, I know you got, you got involvement in the district, so thank you for that, and so I just really encourage all of you, not to make this a stepping stone into something great, but let the kids be what is your something great, right? This isn't a gateway, really, to city council or county commissioner.
Is it?
I, I would hope not, right? We're the lowest paid, right? We're the lowest paid in all of the, you know, governmental bodies, but we do the best work, we do the toughest work, and we do the thing that really affects the lives the most, right? We're getting in the hearts and minds of kids, and if you can't do that, before we even make this consideration, quit now, because honestly, if you can't do that, then you're not the right person, and we need to know, right? If, if we're considering people, that that can't be your priority. If your priority really is to do something above and beyond helping kids, then be honest with us and tell us, so we don't make the right, you know, the wrong decision. But if your hearts and minds are that way, and after we've chosen five, continue with us, find out how you can get involved, look for committee appointments in the district so you can work with the board of trustees, go do your readings in the classroom, do whatever you can, but don't fade away like what happened last time, when I would say roughly 95% of them probably faded away and aren't involved in the district today. So, that's just my say lobby.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. Okay, I think we are, if there's no further discussion, then we should, well, don't forget to sign your ballots, please, matter of fact, you may want to do that first, so you don't forget, because I know we'll all be struggling through these Xs and where they go, and then fold them in half, and we'll give them to our, to our legal counsel, and although he won't announce them as he counseles, he will tally them up, we will have a recess during that time, but they will count them right here in the open, and then we will, we will, we'll take a, we have to do this now, yes, we do, Trustee Rosenberg, do it now, and then we'll have a 10-minute recess, recess, 15-minute recess. You may be a slow counter. We'll have a 15-minute recess, and then we'll, we will re-adjourn. We will reconvene at 25:00 after, we'll reconvene in 15 minutes at 25:00 after. So, the tally was six for Mr. Horn, six for Ms. Nicolette, six for Ms. Simon, four for Mr. McDonald, and four for Mr. Ladon, which would be your five candidates moving for, our applicants moving for. Thank you very much, Mr. Rimbardo. We would like at this time to open it up if there's any public comment, another opportunity for public comment at this time, if there's any further public comment. I don't think we have any cards, seeing none, then we'll, we'll turn it over to Mr. Lazik. We'll have a conversation about the interview process.
All right. Previously, and this is entirely up to you for your questions, sorry about that, in the past, each trustee submitted one question, and so then we developed the questions from there, but I would ask that you each submit two questions, so in case there were duplicates, we don't, we can go on to your second question. From there, we'll develop the interview questions, but we won't release those unless you wish to the applicants, but that's entirely up to you.
That, that has not been done, I certainly opened our discussion with, with my colleagues, that has not been done in the past, based upon the last two selection processes, and I don't know that there's a reason to deviate from that unless there's a desire to from the board.
No, no, let them come unprepared, so they can, we can hear what they really are, what they really think, right? It's not a prepared answer.
Okay, so I think we're going to continue, just as we discussed, that we will continue with the process as we've done it in the past?
Yes.
And so what we will do, just as, as a repeat, then we will submit to our chief of staff two questions in priority order, question number one, question number two, and, and in case your question number one has already been written by another trustee, can default to, to the second question. On there, we want to make sure that we allow Mr. Hood as well, our student representative, to submit a question, might as well, we certainly want to make sure that, that he's a part of that process, so we'll ask you, Chief of Staff, if you would make sure we reach out to him, we certainly want to make sure that he can be involved in that as well.
All right, and then next, we need to finalize the date for the interviews, and so we have tentatively scheduled, I believe, March 29th for that interview process, again at 5:30 PM. The location of which...
We, we can, we can certainly discuss...
Said that we can do it here again, or the county has been generous and offered us their facilities as well, so either place is up to you, but I would leave that up to your decision.
Again, open for, for, for board discussion, I mean, I, I like the idea of having a larger place, I mean, it, it will be, it will, could potentially have a larger crowd and, and allow more to be a part of it. The, the thing about the county is they can livestream, because that would be important to make sure that it could livestream for anyone who cannot be, be there but wants to, but would like to follow along. The, the date is the, the tentative date, the 29th, based upon everyone's, everyone's calendar. Unfortunately, we know that, and just as, just to state for the record, that is the second week of spring break, which is not, that we only have two weeks of spring break. You, you may be breaking for three weeks, but the, the rest of us are breaking for two, Trustee Rosario. It is the second week of spring break, which is, which is unfortunate, but based upon where we are in the, in the calendars, three of us are unavailable next week, the next two weeks are spring break, after that, there's travel, there's a national conference, there's, there's someone going a day early, someone staying, I mean, that's from, from tickets already being purchased, it's, it would be a waste of the public's money to try to change tickets to, to accommodate, because they're business trips for most of us, to accommodate that, so it is not ideal, I want to go on record to say that, and we've, we've, we certainly know it is not ideal, but if we don't take that, and that is the one opportunity, we have to do it between now and the third or fourth week in April, and that is a very long time for those that have been selected as finalists to wait between now and then, so again, that's why we want to make sure it's livestreamed. Yes, Trustee Smith and Trustee Rosario?
As we consider that date, March 29th, because of all the conflicts, I don't know if this is possible, so maybe Neil, you could tell me, today we heard, you know, applicants' letters read to us because they couldn't make it, can we, can we allow public comment to come in, can we, via a letter that, that, and have it read because they can't make it? I don't know, so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, absolutely, public comment, or, go ahead.
As he said, yes, and for the record, there was, there were a lot of emails in support of various candidates. All of those emails are posted in board docs as support material, so they are available to the public and to you all to read as well.
I, I think that because, because JJ did a great job of forwarding every, every email, she responded to the person that sent the email and made sure that we, that we all receive those, that is, that the way for, for that to happen, and it is available to the public, I think in terms of reading it, because if we look at all of the emails that we could potentially receive, that could be a lot of reading, the important thing is that everyone has access to the information and that we've gotten it ahead of time, and that has absolutely happened, so, so thank you, JJ, for, for doing that. In addition, if it is at the county, if it is, and unless, that's discussion that we're having, they will also make it available on their public access channel, so it will be on television as well. Trustee Rosario?
So, just in, in the spirit of transparency, can we make sure we put something on our website, just restating what Chief of Staff said about, if you can't be here, will, your comments will be put into the public record, they'll be posted with the supporting documents, so people know that their voice will still be heard. You know, I think that's important, that we're...
We absolutely can do that.
Thank you, very...
I like that, it's, it's a part of actually the, the support documents for, for the other, we, we won't take that time, because there may be tons of them, but they're part of the supporting documents, so they're available for everyone, I think that's important.
Trustee Smith?
And then Trustee Mayor?
I would ask some of our media partners in the room, so when we're talking about this in the media, to maybe let people know, hey, we are getting those emails for people who aren't going to be able to make it, we are sensitive that it's over spring break, but please send us the emails, and as you know, you can always do a records request to make sure that we got all those emails, right? So, please, please, you know, let people know, so we can, we need lots of facets to get this information out, that we do care, and we are concerned that it's over spring break, but we do have a duty to move and get this done as soon as possible.
And in addition, a records request won't be required, Trevin, because it will be posted in the part of the packets, just to randomly come up with a name, they will be posted, and so they really will be available for everyone. Trustee Mayor?
Yes, in the past, in two previous, they had the five candidates in here, and then they go for an interview, they drew a order of their interview, and the other four went to an office, is that the way it's going to be this time?
That is correct, so while one applicant is interviewing, we would hold the other four in a separate room, that would not be available for technology.
The...
So, the other four candidates, while one candidate is interviewing, would not be in this room listening to the interviews.
Right.
So, just to clarify, we're not going to be holding them, so it'll be kind of a, like a...
We were in a holding sale last... We were in a holding sale last time. We were in a holding sale.
It'll be a green room. What do they call it before you go on Johnny Carson?
It was a green, it's a green room. We, we were in a holding sale, there were no snacks. There was no, no, but, no, but, actually, we brought snacks, but, but, but it should be, no, it should be in another room, so that we can, it is open, and we asked, just as, I think that's a really good point, though, and we also asked all of the candidates, we, we pulled names out of a hat. They did, I was obviously on the other side, and just, so it was a random, they were randomly called from which order they went in standpoint. We had a public comment first, and then went into the interview, pulled them out of the hat, and then the other four were asked, were asked to leave, and then to not use their electronic devices while in there.
And, and they don't go back to the room.
No, once they're in, once they're done with the interview, they can stay here.
And stay and watch the other interviews.
That, that is the process we, we used before, unless there's a reason to not do that. I, I think, I think it worked. Trustee Franco.
I'd just like to return to the question of the location of the meeting on the 29th. And I, I'm not, I'm not sure, because we never really know, but in light of the turnout that we saw today, when we had 11 people, I'm not anticipating that we're going to need the county commission chambers. I mean, I for one would like to have it, as many people as possible come, but I'm not sure we're going to need that. So I'm just throwing that out as, because I know that was the original intent in thinking about the county commission chambers, and we were prepared for overflow today, and I'm sure we would do the same on the 29th in anticipation of more people. So I'm fine either way, but I just wanted to voice that.
I, I can see that as well, and then I remember the last process, when it was narrowed from 17 to, I think, I don't know if we had five or six, I don't remember, that, that, we had five, when it was narrowed from 17 to five, and there were 17 then, there wasn't, there weren't even as many people in the room then as there were, as there are today. But on the day of the interviews, it was a different story.
That's fine.
It was, it was a much different story. That's why my recommendation, but it wa- it was a much different story.
Like I said, I'm fine either way, so we need to make...
So what, yes, what, what is the pleasure?
I think, can staff make that decision?
I was going to say, I really, I really think it's probably a decision that, that we should make as a board, from, from, from my standpoint, um...
Then I will recommend, in the order of, you know, to make it ease for people, if there is a large group and there's good parking at the county, we take advantage of our partnership with the county and their very gracious offer to host this very, very important interview process.
Is, is that, so is that, is that a motion? Trustee Rosario.
We don't need a motion?
We don't need a motion for it, okay.
It's just administrative, but let's, I think we just need to decide and move on.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we've, I think we just need to decide, like, you've heard from your board, and the president can decide, and...
Okay, well, we'll hear from trustee Rosenberg.
I don't think we need a coliseum, I really don't. I think we can do it quite comfortably here. If there are overflows, there are overflows. But this is where we are, this is where we belong, and I'm sure there'll be more than enough parking. If they have to walk a little bit, it's okay too. In fact, I'll give up my handicap parking space for someone and toddle over here by myself.
Let's tell you what, we, yes, trustee Smith.
I, I, I agree. I think we should do it here, if, you know, I think it's feasible, we could do it, we could reorganize the boardroom, I think we could fit a lot more chairs in here than we have. You know, the trustees can be a little bit uncomfortable for a day. We don't need to have all this space. I think this is who we are. We are Washoe County School District, we are not Washoe County Commission. So I think, I think it's important to have it here, get into the work. And truth be told, I'm sure there are other ways, if we do get a ton of people, we could probably put them in one of the conference rooms, give them a tour of the building, they can always see our capital needs, right? But I think this is where we belong, this is where we do our business. I think we should try to find a way to, just, just do it here.
Trustee mayor, you have an opinion? I haven't heard from you.
I don't care either way.
Okay, well, I've, I've heard from our co- from our colleagues, and, and, and at the recommendation of legal counsel is, I've heard from our colleagues, and I'll, we'll make a decision very shortly, hearing all of this from everyone, so we can be in it together. Hmm? Okay, I don't know if that matters like this instant, but however, based upon, we have two people that feel strongly against it, one that, like, I, I, I agree with, with, with trustee Rosario, that we should, in the interest of transparency and the interest of, so that more people can be involved, in the interest of more people attending, then, then, then I, I would like to have it at the county commission building. So that's, that's what we'll do. Thank you for the feedback from everyone. I think we want to bend in the, over to the, if you want to come, come. We want you to come.
Make sure we do it at like...
We're going to do it at 5:30. Yes, yes, we do it at 5:30 to allow that as well. So thanks, everyone, for their feedback on that.
The last thing I would request is a date certain for which you will submit your interview questions. So if we're doing interviews on the 29th...
28.
So maybe a few days before that.
How about the 22nd? And that, what, the 22nd, that gives us, that gives us a couple of weeks, and then it also gives time in case there are duplications, or any, any other questions, any kind of clarifications, or, or, do you have something?
Reminder.
Oh, yes, certainly, a reminder is always helpful, but that way there's time to adjust if necessary. And so just, just in order of recap, after, after, after the discussion, again, thank you, thank you for that. We will have our interviews on the 29th at 5:30 PM at the county commission building to allow for as many, hopefully they can be there, and it will be on public access, so people can watch it on TV if they'd like, as well as it will be livestreamed. Each trustee will submit two questions in priority order to our chief of staff by the end of business on the 22nd, and then they can be appropriately put together and so on. He'll also make sure he reaches out to our student representative, Mr. Hood, we want to, certainly want to make sure that he's involved as well. And if for some reason, since it's spring break, if he isn't able to attend, then let's reach out to the vice chair of the student advisory board, because I think it's really important to have student representation on, on that as well.
I see.
Bless you. Anything else from the, from the trustees for the good of the order?
Yes.
As trustee mayor.
I think we ought to introduce our executive director of the State School Board Association, Dottie Merrill. She's sitting way in the back.
Absolutely. We are, we're, Dottie Merrill, she is the executive director of the State School Board Association. She has spent a lifetime of work in education, and she runs all of us at all 17 school districts. She organizes our state association, our conferences, our training, all of that. So Dottie, thank you for being here, it's a pleasure to have you.
And she's also my former English teacher, she taught me how to read and write, so...
So that, all the more reason we welcomed you. All the, all the more reason.
I gave you the foundation to be built on.
Okay, then, just before we end, is there any additional public comment from anyone? Yes, Mr. Horn, I know, I know you know the routine, you have a yellow card. Come on up, sort of, thank you, you know you have three minutes, thank you very much.
Bill Horn, for the record, I just have a question. The support letters that have already been sent to you, do we need to have those sent again, or will they be included in the packets on the 29th of March?
I think that's a great question. Can, is, is, can we forward, we can forward those over, so that we don't inconvenience any of those support letters and so on that we've received, emails, letters and so on. We'll make sure that we...
We don't need to have them sent again.
They will not have to be resent. That's just arduous work, that we can pass those and make sure that they are a part of the support materials for our next meeting.
Just for clarity, we'll, we will repost those in board docs when we post the agenda for March 29th.
Okay, so that everyone will have this, very good question. Trustee Rosario.
I just want to give a shout out to staff, JJ and staff and superintendent, thank you so much. This is a lot of work, this process, so I really want to thank you, and I know it's been difficult trying to get all the dates, because we're all so, so busy, and, and our chief of staff's patience with trying to work all our schedules, I really appreciate it. So thank you so much.
Thank, thank you for that, trustee Rosario. We can be like herding cats sometimes to get all this together.
However, I don't think that trustee Rosario knows, we have a special room for them at the home.
That we've been reserved for them. And again, thank you to, again, thank you to all that were involved in this process that submitted, and just remember the words of trustee Smith, we really still would like everyone to continue to be involved, we need your help. Okay, that being said, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.